Hey, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Sally Bagshaw. I want to say thank you for joining us. This is the Finance and Neighborhood Committee for January 23rd, 2019. And thank you so much, Councilmember Gonzalez, for being here. I want to give a quick overview about what we're going to be doing today. We're going to be reappointing Angelique Davis to the Civil Service Commission. And then with much thanks to Jeff Davis and George Emerson, we are going to be talking about the Seattle Retirement Savings Plan Board. You may remember, and I'm sure you do, that a year ago, when then-Mayor Tim Burgess was with us, he had presented an idea that would expand and extend Seattle's retirement program to other working members of the city outside the city of Seattle. And we conducted a market analysis, thanks to Boston College, who was a consultant that came in. Both George and Jeff will provide a bit of information about that. At the conclusion, we decided that, in fact, I will just leave that conclusion and let them tell you, just to keep you on pins and needles and watching.
Bury the headline.
Yeah, exactly. So then we're going to conclude today with a director's report from Andres Mantilla, Director of the Department of Neighborhoods, about all the work that they're doing in the city of Seattle. And I really want to say thank you to Andres, to your team last night. We had one of our first Community Involvement Commission annual report launch, and I was impressed with the folks who were there. And I again want to extend my thanks to the members of that commission. They have done such a good job in outreach, and the real goal was to extend the city's reach into various neighborhoods to people who haven't necessarily been involved or included or having their voices included. So that commission is doing a great job and moving beside some of our district groups that have been there in neighborhoods for, and sometimes decades, that whereas the neighborhood associations are still active and going, this adds another element for the Community Involvement Commission to be able to reach people that haven't been in the past. So I appreciated that and appreciated the fact that, once again, when I raised the issue about age-friendly, that the commission is well aware that as they're doing their work, that they're including voices from across our region and across the neighborhoods, but also making every decision that we make something that includes people that may have difficulties getting around or people who just simply have in the past felt invisible. So with that, I think we can work toward reappointing Angelique Davis. So would you like to read that in? And thank you very much for getting us organized, Allison.
Absolutely. Item number one, appointment number 01246, reappointment of Angelique M. Davis as a member of the Civil Service Commission for a term to December 31st, 2021.
Very good. Thank you.
So I'm Jennifer Greenlee. I'm the Director for the Civil Service Commission, and we're requesting reappointment for the second time of Commissioner Davis. She's been an active member of the commission. She previously worked for the City Attorney's Office in a private law firm in labor employment law and is currently a professor at Seattle University. So she has a background that leads her to understand the issues, and we'd appreciate her reappointment.
Great. And she's currently the Director of the Global African Studies Program and Pre-Law Program at Seattle University.
Correct.
Very good. So I know what is important to her because I had asked that question: civil rights, citizenship, and civic engagement, constitutional law, politics and society, and law and gender, race and law, and international law, just to name a few. Do you have any questions?
I don't. I am familiar with Professor Davis and think she's a wonderful ongoing addition to this commission.
Very good. Well, then I would like to move the reappointment of Angelique Davis to the Civil Service Commission.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition, and there's no abstention. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much for having me.
So the next item we have is the Seattle Retirement Savings Plan Report. And I think Jeff, I don't know if Jason is here with you, Jason Malinowski, but the other Jason is here. Come on up. And George.
Item number two, Seattle Retirement Savings Plan Report. Briefing and discussion.
Very good. I just called Travis Jason, but Travis, thank you for being here. He's been a board member. George, would you like to start introductions, please?
Yes, good afternoon. I'm George Emerson in the Budget Office in Department of Finance.
Great. Travis?
Travis Rosenthal, owner of Park Street Hospitality Group.
Good. Thank you.
Jeff Davis, Executive Director of the Seattle Retirement System and Board Member of the Seattle Retirement Savings Plan.
Thank you all for being here. So who's kicking it off?
So I will kick it off. And thank you for having us here to talk about the Seattle Retirement Savings Plan. Thank you, Councilmember Bagshaw, for your chairship of the SRSP Board. You may remember, as Sally didn't steal everything I was going to say in her intro, back in 2017, City Council passed an ordinance that created the SRSP Board and charged it with evaluating the feasibility of establishing a retirement savings plan for workers in Seattle that weren't already covered by a savings plan, a retirement option through their employer. These plans operate a little bit similar to a 401K in that eligible workers would be automatically enrolled. They would, their savings would grow over time based upon their contributions and the growth and investment earnings that their investments earn. The accounts would be in their name, so there would be portability if they were to change jobs over their career. That account would go with them, and it would be something that they could opt out of at any time. So last year, the SRSP Board looked at feasibility analysis. We did a market analysis, working with Boston College, a group out of there. We did a legal analysis, working with K&amp;L Gates. The market analysis found that it was feasible for Seattle to establish a system like this, but it did find that there would be advantages to partnering with other jurisdictions, such as the state of Oregon, who just went live with a similar program. On the legal side, there were no obstacles in federal law that were identified, but there were some things, existing state law, that could be barriers that would need to be worked through. So that was our analysis. And at the same time we were doing our analysis, we got word that in the Washington State Legislature, there was a movement to introduce a bill that would do a similar thing at the statewide level. And the Seattle Plan, the Board felt that that was a preferable option, that a statewide plan would offer a number of benefits. Obviously, it would cover more people, and that's a good thing. There would be cost savings for the individual participant in that there are fixed costs and startup costs associated with these things that would be spread across a broader base of participants. And the legal things that we, Seattle, would have to work through to establish a plan wouldn't be an issue for a statewide plan. For those reasons, the SRSP Board is recommending that we defer moving forward with the Seattle Plan right now until we see how this plays out at the state. And we also recommend that we provide any assistance we can to our colleagues at the state in giving information or any kind of assistance we can give.
Great. Thank you for that good summary. I was also very impressed. Travis, thank you for your diligence. I know it takes time away from your work for you to participate, but you asked great questions about what are the impacts for employers, maybe folks who weren't sure that they wanted to participate. And I believe that the result that we came up with was one that was thoroughly vetted when we had Boston College, because we were not the first that they have reviewed. So they gave us good information. They also helped us look at what the costs would be. And as you pointed out many times, that this was not going to cost city of Seattle money immediately, but there would be a payback. I mean, it wasn't general fund money that was going to be used, as I recall, but that it would be something like an 18-year payback by the time we got the program.
Depending on if you're going alone or if you're partnering with other jurisdictions.
Correct. And that when you partnered, it was a lot less.
Right.
And when the state of Oregon had done much work, I was very happy to see that the state of Washington was diving in as well. But whether that law passes in the state of Washington or not, we still could access the state of Oregon, as I understand.
Right. And we actually, during our feasibility analysis, had a conversation with a representative from the Oregon Plan. And I think they'd be perceptive to talking with us and pursuing that further.
Do you want to talk a little bit, maybe, George? This is something that you would like to participate in as well. But why is this important, just in terms of the numbers of people who are saving for retirement right now? Why something, a program like this would make it easier for them?
I think the, and I do have a slideshow if you'd like to go through.
Oh, great. Please.
If you don't have any further questions. Allison, in your office, had shared some questions about demographics and the demand for retirement services and where things are now. So I figured we could go through some of that and answer some of those questions. We're going to begin just with a look at the different types of retirement plans that you hear about and are available. One that most people are familiar with is Social Security, which is a federally, a federal government-sponsored program that we pay into, employers pay into, and then we get a defined benefit based on age and the amount of money that we paid in. For most people, they expect to get about 40% of their salary in retirement from Social Security. Other plans that we hear about are defined benefit programs. That is something similar to the city's pension system. That is where employers and employees pay in a certain percentage of their salary, and then at retirement, based upon their years of service and their age, they get a certain percentage of that salary guaranteed for the rest of their life. A defined contribution program is one in which, also employer-sponsored, where a combination of contributions from an employee and an employer go into a pot of money, usually administered and invested by the employee, and then that is supposed to be used for retirement. But it's not guaranteed, and all of the investment risk is on the employee for retirement security. That would be something like a 401K that you hear of, or the city has a supplementary retirement system called a 457 Plan, very similar. And then there are individual retirement accounts, IRAs. They come in a couple of different flavors, one a traditional, one a Roth, and they are tax-advantaged programs that people can save for retirement outside of having a plan offered at work. So you have to be proactive and do that on your own, but there are a number of advantages in the tax code that allow for that. So what does it look like now? 64% of all American workers have access to a retirement plan that's sponsored from work, be it a defined contribution or a defined benefit program like here at the city. This is a chart on the left that, up top, shows all workers, and then that is split out between defined benefit and defined contribution plans. And you can see that defined benefit plans make up a very small percentage of the total retirement plans available to the American workforce. When we look at different income.
Partly, I can't read the numbers on this that I'm looking at. Can you just explain that a little bit more?
So the top few bars is looking at the entire population of American workers that have access to a retirement plan at work, and that is about 64, 65% of all employees. That's that very top bar. Then that is split up into different income levels.
Gotcha.
And then below, it actually gives the breakout of those that have access to a defined benefit pension and those that have access to a defined contribution program.
Okay.
Just really quickly on that, on the all workers' number, does that, is that, does that include Social Security?
This does not include Social Security.
Okay.
So all workers in the United States that have a, most workers are Social Security-eligible in the U.S., so this does not include that.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that that was the case, because you included Social Security as a retirement plan type on your previous slide.
That's right.
Which I would not categorize that as a retirement plan, but I just wanted to make sure that when, that the, if there is a difference in definition here, that I was clear as to what that difference is.
Just do want to highlight that those that don't have access to a plan at work, that if they're saving individually, that's good, but for the most part, Social Security is their only retirement option. So highlighting the risk.
It's going to be the only, Social Security will be the only income that they receive in retirement age.
For those that aren't saving now, yeah. Potentially, that's a risk. So of those 64%, there's about a 70% take-up rate. So what we see is that 45% of all workers actually participate in a retirement plan. So there are a number of employees that have access to a plan that aren't currently saving in one. And then we can also see that the breakdown in income levels shows that both low-income people have lower access to retirement plans and have lower participation rates.
And then, once again, these are, these are numbers from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics.
That's right.
So these are national numbers, not specific to our labor market.
That's exactly right. I wanted to give you a high-level overview of what's happening nationally for retirement.
Okay. And then I don't think I saw in your presentation numbers that are specific to our labor market in particular.
We do have the feasibility study that Jeff and Councilmember Bagshaw mentioned earlier that highlights some of their estimates for Seattle retirement security. I wanted to use national data that does not require as many assumptions to make, but we'd be happy to share that report.
Yeah. In reviewing the materials for today's committee, there's reference in the December 27, 2018, to the initial report, and then the two-page memo was listed in our system as the report. So is this the report, or is there more?
Yeah, this, so there was a requirement in the ordinance that the Board report back to the City Council on what the findings of the feasibility analysis was. So this is the overall report. You know, this is a summary of where we are. We're not recommending that we final it out, but there are supporting documents on the feasibility study, the legal analysis, and things like that.
Okay.
And we're happy to make those available.
That was all presented to the committee by Boston College and by the lawyers. So that is available.
I don't think it was presented to this committee.
It was presented to the Board, I'm sorry.
To that.
Which I don't sit on, so I don't have the benefit of having had that information.
We can get that for you.
Yeah.
Next, I wanted to look at a different look at the demographic breakdown. We see that for access to plans, there's no significant difference among genders, but we do notice that Hispanics have lower access as well as the young, which are categorized here as the millennials. We also know outside of this chart that part-time employees tend to have lower access to retirement plans, and small businesses are far less likely to offer a plan than larger businesses.
George, on that last point, the small employers are less likely to provide a plan. When we were doing, when I was doing work a couple of years ago around development of a potential policy and program at the city of Seattle related to paid family and medical leave, that ultimately, we were able to persuade the state legislature to act quickly to make that a statewide program. One of the things that I found really helpful in the outreach, and I spoke with about, with over 100 small employers across the city as it relates to the benefits associated with paid family and medical leave, and one of the things that I learned from a lot of these small businesses is that part of the reason they don't offer these benefits is because it's just too darn expensive for them to be able to buy it from a third-party vendor. So a lot of them expressed deep desire to want to provide these types of employee benefits, because frankly, they see it as a way to make them more competitive as well, but it was just too expensive. Is that dynamic, the same dynamic that plays out in the context of discussing employer-provided retirement plans as well?
Absolutely. And I don't want to speak for Travis here, but that is a reason that the mayor, and the way in which the Board was set up, was to have inclusion from the business and labor community and showing that small businesses, just like you said, have high barriers of entry in providing these types of plans. Also, that you can imagine that if you're relatively small, you have comparative advantage in what you're offering, but as you expand your employment base, there's a high burden of both education and time spent in creating these plans that I would imagine a lot of small firms don't really have access to or can afford as they're growing.
I think you'll find a lot of small businesses are going to be in support of some type of program like this, especially on a state level, even being more supportive of a state level-type system than a city level, especially for those that kind of operate within and out of the city borders.
And then, did the feasibility study also include an evaluation of, or include consideration for nonprofits?
It tried. The intent was to encompass all employers, so to the degree that nonprofits are employers, yes.
It wasn't a huge monetary burden for small businesses to enact the retirement plan that we were looking for, for the city. So I don't think it'd be a huge burden for a nonprofit as well.
Okay. Please continue, George.
Yep. Next, just to highlight some of the purposes that Council both asked and created the Board to investigate, that really, when you look at the state of who has access to retirement plans and who ends up participating in retirement plans, that we wanted to see, is there a way that we could involve more people? And so the intent was to see if it was feasible to create a plan for employees that don't currently have access at their jobs and to automatically enroll them in the program. They still have the opportunity to opt out, but you automatically enroll, which, and that has shown in a number of studies, that if you automatically enroll someone, they are less likely to opt out as opposed to giving the option to opt in. And that really goes a long way to filling that gap between what they may have savings or retirement plans from Social Security to what they'll need for a comfortable retirement.
And that's the bullet point you have at the bottom there, that shows that studies, and what we already know, is that automatic enrollment leads to much higher participation and savings rate than if you voluntarily tried to put in a certain percentage out of each paycheck.
Exactly.
Do you have a question? Sure, of course you can.
I was just wondering if Jeff can speak to our SIR's program? And I know at least on our department, you have to opt in for it. Do you see less people opting in because of that?
Yeah, so for the majority of Seattle employees who aren't part of the left program for police and fire, they are automatically enrolled by nature of their position. There are some exempt employees that have the option to join or not, and some temporary employees, and once they meet an hour threshold, they can opt in as well. We don't have great statistics on that right now. I think we'll have better statistics on that kind of opt-in as we go forward with building out some of our capabilities. But that's one thing that we're going to really emphasize in the coming years, is communicating to that group of people that it's an option for them to join or not.
I think one of the things I've really appreciated, Jeff, about you and the Board, is what we're really trying to do to get coordinated information to the employees. I know this was something that I was talking about last year, of people come, they can join in or not to the 457 Plan, and why that is so important, and why, as a person who's just beginning his or her career, that even a small investment starts adding up.
Right.
And I think the fact that, and Sue McNabb raised this as well, that if we can make that communication clear and more available to people so that they know what their options are, it's going to really help.
Totally agree.
Next, just wanted to cover some options that are currently available to employees, whether they have access to a plan at work or not. A few years ago, the state of Washington looked at this very problem. And the legislature, while didn't come up with a solution similar to what the SRSP is designed to do, and it sounds like they may be looking at those questions this legislative session, what they did create, though, is the Retirement Marketplace. And that is a website that both employees and employers can go to to find third-party vendors who have created investment plans that anyone can participate in that doesn't have a plan at work. This is one small step towards addressing those businesses that don't currently offer plans for their employees, as well as giving one place, a one-stop shop for employees to look to see what's available. There are different programs based upon your needs that you can fill out a kind of an online survey, and it will direct you to what's available. And that's a, I think that's a good first step and a good resource for both small businesses and individuals looking to start retirement.
I believe that you said before that these are fairly inexpensive.
Yes.
To join in. Can you talk a little bit about just the costs and also what the benefits would be for an individual that may want to invest in a Roth IRA as contrasted to a traditional one? What goes into making that decision?
Sure. I can't speak to full knowledge on everything that the Retirement Marketplace offers, but in my cursory look, I did see that they tend to be low-cost, low-dollar, most IRAs, you can start with $0 and make an automatic deduction from your paycheck or have your employer automatically send, based on, send some money. Most of the fees tend to be on the order of 25 to 50 basis points, so maybe up to half a percentage of assets under management as you get going. That's pretty good, and as you get more assets under, sometimes those fees can come down. To talk about a Roth and traditional IRA, those are tax-advantaged individual retirement accounts that allow you in 2019 to set aside up to $6,000 in pre-tax earnings to save for retirement. A traditional IRA is pre-tax, a Roth IRA is post-tax, and there are some online calculators that can help you decide which may best fit your situation. But both of them, you're allowed to contribute up to $6,000 a year. The Roth IRA, which is the post-tax, does have an income limit, which I believe for a single filer is about $130,000 in wages a year, and for a married couple filing jointly, it's about $200,000 a year. A traditional IRA has no income limits.
It's pretty good for a cursory look, George.
Yeah. Nice job.
And then, if you do have access to a defined contribution plan at work, most employees can contribute up to $19,000 a year for 2019, but it does have to be either a 401K or 457 Plan.
Yeah, okay.
That's right. Then below, just wanted to highlight that there are a number of banks, investment firms, and other financial firms and websites that offer low-cost ways to save typically in the IRA format or your own personal trading account. Some of the, some of the ones I listed here, but this is by any means not exhaustive. But Schwab, TD Ameritrade, and Betterment are good first steps.
And you said that there aren't minimums? You could put in $25 if you wanted in most of these?
That's right. You can open an account for $0.
On the retire, retirementmarketplace.com website, which conveniently just happened to pop onto it, they do have a really convenient widget that you can use that sort of helps to guide you in choosing a plan that might fit your needs. And I also noticed that they have plans available for sole proprietors, and I forgot the other term. But I thought that was interesting, that it's not just somebody who has an employee status, but it could be available to sole proprietors as well.
That's right.
Nice. Thank you. Thank you for looking. All right.
And then just finally, Allison had sent some questions, talking about, you know, how much to save, what's the process. As I mentioned at the beginning, that for many workers, Social Security may not be enough for a comfortable retirement. Now, what constitutes a comfortable retirement can vary at income levels and what's appropriate, but a general rule of thumb is but a general rule of thumb is somewhere on the order of replacing your salary 65% to 75%. Most workers can expect to receive about 40%, 39% to 40% of their salary in retirement from Social Security. Lower-income individuals, lower-wage earners can receive up to 55%. And so, in that way, the Social Security program is slightly progressive and geared towards helping lower-income earners more than higher income. But still, that represents a gap if you're looking for that rule of thumb of 65% to 75% of wages. And studies have shown, and the market feasibility analysis from Boston College also concurred that if you had individuals saving anywhere between 5% and 10% of wages, that they're much more likely to be able to fill in that gap and have a comfortable retirement. And, you know, it's easy, relatively straightforward to open up these accounts, be it through Retirement Marketplace or others, and you can start with as little as $0 and begin saving through automatic deductions.
So, what would you say to an individual who says, "Well, if you can do this, if an individual or a sole proprietor or a small employer can set something up through the Retirement Marketplace, what is the advantage for the state? What's the advantage for a Seattle Retirement Savings Plan that would be different than what is available through the marketplace?"
I would highlight that page back on the Seattle Retirement Savings Plan, that really the big benefit is getting people who are not currently saving for retirement to automatically save, and that when you have a plan like the Seattle Retirement Savings Plan, or if the state's plan, the Retirement Marketplace, were to go to an automatic enrollment, I think you'd see a much higher participation rate, many more people saving for retirement, and closing that gap. I think that really speaks to the difference.
And I don't think these things are in conflict either. I think the marketplace being out there is a good option for some employers or sole proprietors to engage in that, but it works well for people that employers don't offer that, that they would have an option where they're automatically enrolled in a savings plan.
I also remember when people leave jobs, you know, for an employer's standpoint, it's easier to transfer that retirement program to the next job than if we have separate ones that we're all dealing with and trying to manage that behind the scenes.
Right. That's good. Do you have another question?
I do. So, on the Washington State legislative effort, who is running those bills?
I'm not aware of the sponsor of that. I've heard that it's close to being introduced now, but it's not introduced yet.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I haven't had an opportunity to dig into the work that the board did, and sort of hear the nitty-gritty, granular details of the feasibility study, but I'm slightly disappointed that we're punting until the state acts, and part of that is admittedly because I haven't had the benefit of being in the weeds like you all have been, and look forward to learning a little bit more about what that feasibility study says that led the board to believe that it would be beneficial to wait for the state legislature to take some action here. But, you know, if that is the strategy that is going to be pursued by the city of Seattle, then I think this needs to be a very high priority on our state legislative agenda, and we need to work very closely with the sponsors and supporters of the bill in Olympia to make sure that they understand how the plan should and needs to be structured in order to meet the needs of Seattle workers in particular. You know, we're the most expensive city in the state, we're one of the most expensive cities in the country, our wage-well gap continues to grow, and middle-income-class families just feel like they're losing ground in this city, in large part because they don't have the ability to maintain wealth in the same way as incredibly rich people do in our city. And so, I think this is a really important plan for us to continue to keep the pressure on, to keep the support, needs to be very, very strong for something like this, because I think it's exactly what so many thousands and thousands and thousands of workers in our city really need this, to be able to have some level of financial security into the future. So, I'm interested in just learning a little bit more about what the legislature intends in this area, and what this board intends to do to make sure that those legislators who are supporting this effort in Olympia need to know in order to make sure that the needs of our workers are met here.
Great.
And I will be along with Councilmember Musqueta in Olympia on the 12th, I believe, of February, and this is on the list, so we'll be talking more. Very good. Anything else? Anything else that you would like to add, gentlemen? Okay.
Only because I harassed George with so many questions, I think my goal was just retirement for a long time for many people seems very unattainable and unapproachable, and I think this has an opportunity to make that easy and accessible in any way that we can push it, I think would benefit Seattleites greatly, so.
Yeah, and part of the reality is, you know, we talk about the different kinds of retirement. There's, you know, defined benefit, which is largely just in the public sector now. There's defined contribution, but there's a growing number of employers that don't offer anything, and so, and defined benefit is largely gone in the private sector. So, what we're concerned about is, like, you're going to get this bow wave of people that all they have is Social Security, and that's not going to be adequate to fund their retirement years. So, yeah, we want to support any effort that provides this as an option for people that aren't covered right now.
Good.
And you can also access what your Social Security estimated payment is going to be on their website, right?
Yes.
Right, and it's shockingly low. So, when people look at that, and you talk about 40%, no way anybody can live on 40% in this city, so I appreciate the work you're doing.
Great.
Where we're going with this. Okay, well, thank you, and we'll have more of these conversations. I think one of the points that we have wanted to make this year is just making this available, this information about retirement and about various plans that our city employees and others that can have access to it, so thank you all for coming. All right, our next item of business is our Department of Neighborhoods report, and I'd like to invite Andres up, and I think Sarah Morningstar, I saw come in, and any others that want to join with us.
Hi.
Hello.
As you get settled in, again, I don't think you were here, Andres Flynn, I just mentioned how much I appreciated the meeting last night, and that commission and the work that they're doing, I think is adding another depth from the Department of Neighborhood and reaching to people, so thank you for that. Excuse me. So, do you want to do introductions?
Sure. Andres Montilla, Department Director for Department of Neighborhoods.
Hi, I'm Wang Wang, and I'm the External Affairs Division Director at DON.
Nice to see you.
I'm Sarah Morningstar, and I'm Andres's deputy director.
Thank you all three for being here. Go ahead.
And let me just echo the thanks for your presence, Councilmember, yesterday. I knew, I know that the commission was very grateful for you to attend as well. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you here and talk a little bit about, now that, I guess it's been about nine, 10 months since I've first as interim and then permanent director, been able to kind of take a look at the functions of the department, and really reflect on the 2018 accomplishments, and then really position us for 2019. So, through this presentation, what I'd like to do is talk about the overview of how we are organizing and continuing to organize now, in particular, some of our external relations functions under the leadership of Wang Wang. Talk about some of our recent accomplishments, take you through a little bit of what we're doing, which is really exciting for me around strategic planning, which I think for the Department of Neighborhoods, for the first time in a while, will allow us to kind of convene as, under a North Star, where we're all working towards the same goals, and then talk a little bit about 2019 priorities and project focus. So, one of the things that I did when we, when we first came in, was really try to analyze, what were some of the core functions that we needed to implement or to create in order for us to be successful in both supporting the community access into government, and also best positioning the city in its implementation of projects and planning. One of the things that we realized, I realized very quickly, is that outreach was fairly siloed, even within Department of Neighborhoods, and so, it was really a priority for me to get a handle on the types of needs that we, how we needed to organize ourselves internally in order to best position for the community. And so, big picture, we've kind of have four main functions now under the department. One is kind of more of our internal operations, which handles all of our community investments, our community grants, such as Neighborhood Matching Fund, Duamish River Opportunity Fund, our community assets, whether it be P patches, the over-90 P patches that we have, and our regulatory function around historic preservation or major institutions, and so on. And then, the external relations, I think is where we did most of the restructuring, and we created a new function in the office called Strategic Initiatives. And Strategic Initiatives is set to really support longer-term policy-related investments and asks. So, when we look at things like supporting our homelessness and unhoused strategy, when we look at supporting our Sound Transit 3 implementation or transportation investment strategy, it works better if we have a consistent presence instead of kind of one-offs. And so, it was really important to me to really strengthen that team, and then therefore created the Strategic Initiatives team. And so, the External Relations Division now is kind of where those things are housed, and we'll get into a little bit about that. What's crucial here for us is, as we continue to kind of develop the department, is how do we grow closer relationships with our capital and planning departments, so that we're not working across purpose from each other, but really working hand-in-hand in terms of achieving the city's objectives, and most importantly, breaking down some of those barriers to access for community, and elevating community voice. Next slide. So, Sarah Morningstar, who's our deputy director, leads the Community Investments Division, which is internal operations, so I'll turn it over to her, so she can introduce the division a little bit more.
Thank you. I just wanted to recap the programs that we have in the Community Investments Division. As Andres mentioned, it's the Community Grants, which is the Neighborhood Matching Fund, awarding $2.4 million in 2018, and that's small sparks, our larger projects, and totaling about 155 projects out the door last year. Additionally, it's the Duamish River Opportunity Fund, in which $250,000 was awarded. Couple examples of that are the $50,000 that went to the South Park Information and Resource Center, and $40,000 to Concord and National PTA for some capacity building there, which was really important. Additionally, it's even the Find It/Fix It program, which we helped facilitate last year with money going to the Rayner Beach Merchants Association for their work, and a sustainable project they have going on down there around litter leaders. Our P patch program, as Andres mentioned, has 90 gardens. It's a way that we have 3,000 of our neighbors involved in gardening across the city, and we have major institutions and historic preservation. And again, if you didn't know, there's eight historic districts, and 13 major institutions, plus a separate program for the K-12 work that we work closely with Seattle schools.
Do you want to talk a little bit, either now or in a few moments, about how you're changing the Neighborhood Matching Grants from being $100,000 max to $25,000, four times a year, how that works, and whether a major project could apply, you know, four times? How does that work?
Sure, Andres is willing to take that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
It's not appropriate here, we can come back to it.
No, it's appropriate here. I think a couple of things were, as we were kind of going through the realities of the program, first of all, thanks again to the council for the carry-forward legislation, which you passed in through the budget process in the fourth quarter supplemental. It's a game changer for us in terms of how we budget and implement the Neighborhood Matching Fund. Without going too much into detail, essentially, it allows Department of Neighborhoods to carry over encumbered or unreleased funds into the next year, so that we can continue to fund that project with the same dollars through completion. Prior to that, we weren't able to do that, and we had to find new funds, if you will, for the completion of existing projects in the prior year. But we also heard from departments and from communities that, you know, spending $100,000 in a fiscal year, or even with several extensions, is difficult. And so, really looking at, and I think in one of the conversations we had with you all around the need around capacity building, one of the things that is, to me, one of the best things about Neighborhood Matching Fund is the technical assistant piece of it, meaning staff will review our drafts of grants and applications before you submit it, and give you feedback if you're hitting the mark, or if you need to, you know, adjust your budget proposal. By reducing the amount, we truly feel that, A, we'll see quicker results of cash getting out of the door, and different type of communities and community groups that may have seen $100,000 as a little bit too much, and seeing $25,000 as more accessible. Now, for those communities that have been receiving $100,000, and essentially for a lot of improvements, I'll call them capital improvements or playground improvements, they'll still be able to access the fund, but they'll likely have to access it in phases. And it actually, we think, will result in more projects out the door, and those projects that are accessing in phases will still be able to be successful, because they enlarge, the large amount of them weren't really expanding their resources in a given year anyways, if that makes sense.
So, let's assume that a neighborhood has their community desire, and it's clear, can they apply upfront for a Phase 1, 2, 3, 4? So, let's say their project is valued at $100,000, or do they have to apply four times?
So, we have three cycles per year, and so, they would work, they would apply individually per cycle, but work with our staff to really show the overall project intent, so that we, as we do now, see the direction that they're moving. One of the things that we're also working on, kind of separate from Neighborhood Matching Fund, through our kind of more consolidated granting approach, is to look at what other resources are available that maybe make more sense to leverage at given times. So, for example, Neighborhood Street Fund, and we'll talk about it later, but we're going to bring that in more closely with Your Voice, Your Choice, because at times, they're funding a lot of the same things, and where there are gaps, and because of lack of collaboration, that's a lot of the times where Neighborhood Matching Fund comes in. So, if we can better align those, you know, there might be some better efficiencies there.
I also appreciate the fact that, I think you've made it clearer to neighborhood groups how they apply and for what.
Yeah.
Because a period of time, you know, you had small sparks, and then you had Neighborhood Matching Grants, and then we added Your Voice, Your Choice, and then the SDOT had its own ways of offering money for different projects, and I think people were frankly confused about what they could apply for, and how much money, and whether or not there were gaps left over.
And certainly, we are still in, you know, very open conversations with community groups. We want to see this as a kind of technical assistance, community capacity opportunity for a lot of folks, and so, in constant conversations now with our staff, and even myself directly with organizations around how to best access these funds.
Thank you.
So, next, in our External Affairs, I'd like to introduce Wang Wang, who is a relatively new hire to the department, but brings a lot of expertise in both racial equity work and fundamental kind of organizational development change, which was essential for this function of the office, that again, as I mentioned, had a lot of efforts going on, but weren't necessarily being coordinated or collaborative in the way that we needed to be successful, so I'll just introduce Wang Wang.
Thank you. So, as Andres mentioned, I'm relatively new, so.
And you can move this around, if it's easier for you.
Just speaking that, great. So, I think, just to sort of elaborate on what you mentioned earlier, in bringing the three different teams under one division for External Affairs, is that in traditional outreach is usually one-time engagements that happen, and so, but we know that it takes time and multiple efforts to build trust relationships with the community, so just kind of having one project, an outreach for it, and then not do anything, and then wait for another, you know, project to come, doesn't really work well. And so, what I'm excited about bringing these three teams together is really to look at how we see how they're all interconnected, and sort of build a continuum of engagement, that there's multiple ways to do engagement and outreach, and that we're really using that there's multiple ways to do engagement and outreach, and that we're really using instead of like one size fits all, we're really using more like a three-pronged approach. And those three-pronged approaches really kind of anchor around these three areas. One is in, as Andreas was mentioning, Strategic Initiative, is sort of the long-term work that takes to really bring in the community voices to have an influence and effect on planning and development and policy. And then we have Outreach and Engagement, which has been more a longstanding legacy program, and this is really like having our folks out in the ground, taking a pulse and read of what's happening in the community. Just this morning, I was part of the Via Dot Closure calls and, you know, was able to share some of the things that we're hearing from the CID area in relation to Via Dot Closure. So it's a way of knowing like what's happening right now in the community, sort of like the read-and-react part of the continuum. And then we have the third pillar in sort of civic engagement and leadership development. And so we have programs in there, like the Community Liaison Program, the People's Academy for Civic Engagement, and also the commissions, you were talking about the commissions, ISK also falling under there, really looking at how that acts as a pipeline for folks to become civic leaders in our next generation and being able to really sort of tap into these other areas of engagement.
Nice. So when you're talking about commissions as an example, we have our new commission, but are we reaching out to some of the other established commissions, like Youth Commission is an example, or the Women's Commission? Are we tapping into those resources as well?
Yes. We actually have the Seattle Youth Commission under part of the Civic Engagement and Leadership Development Program area, and they've been working on how to establish more of collaboration and communications with other commissions across the city and just maybe some of the more, have some more consistency in how some of the process might work in that.
I think that's really valuable, because we, what do we have, 60, 70 commissions? I mean, it's a big number.
And growing.
All good things. And I've talked with a couple of commissioners, and they said, well, you know, we really feel like we could be used more, that we're volunteering time, and we meet, and we meet monthly usually, but we think that there's more we could do. And I thought today, when I met an individual who just said, hey, I really want to participate, but I don't want to just be sitting and going to meetings. I want to have some results at the end. So I'd love to hear, if not today, you know, in the future, what we can do to really leverage those commissions, because I just am so respectful of the amount of time people donate and their expertise that we want to, you know, really, really make the best use so everybody feels that their time is being valued.
Thank you. So just a quick, couple slides on recent accomplishments that we think are, maybe don't get the as much limelight, but we think are significant additions to how we do outreach and how we kind of organize information for communities. So in 2018, we were able to really launch a couple of kind of one-stop-shop city resource tools. The first one being the Community Resource Hub that provides tools, templates, tip sheets, videos, neighborhood profiles, websites. And the goal really is to help the community get informed, involved, and engaged all in one site, not having to go to five or six or seven different websites. We have found a lot of good feedback from that, both for the community we work with, but frankly, from other departments and some electeds that are using our neighborhood snapshots as good resources for their outreach and engagement. The other thing we did was the Community Resource Guidebook, which is kind of more handheld, that was created to provide information on how to engage, where to find resources, something that we could pass out more easily. And then finally, one of the things we heard constantly is from community is, hey, we have this interest and this intent to meet, but we don't have a space to meet. And so, working with our partners at Arts, we partnered on Space Finder that shares information on meeting spaces, whether they be low-cost, free, or at cost. So at least folks have information for, that they can access within their community. So it's been a really useful tool for community organizations. One of the other things that was new to the department was our early community outreach for design review. And, you know, this was a product of the initial Hala recommendations. It was a pilot program. It is a pilot program with partners with SDCI. And it was, the intent of it is really to create a space for conversation. What we were hearing from applicants and what we were hearing from community was surprisingly similar, which was, we don't know how to get in touch with one another, we don't know how to have a meaningful conversation. And frankly, what we were hearing from the design review process is, a lot of these community concerns are coming to the design review, where they really should be addressed beforehand so that then the design review meetings could be about design. And so, we feel that it's been very successful. We are going to be doing some additional outreach as a kind of reviewing the process to see where additional improvements can be made. But just a few numbers, you know, number of contacts that start the process, 140.
What does that mean?
It means a number of folks that have come through the process, so applicants and developers and/or interested in the process itself. We have these equity areas, which require additional outreach in their plan. And so when a developer comes in as a part of their application, they have to submit a plan. We approve that plan based on kind of their intention to engage with the community. And equity areas, which are largely in our central kind of downtown and south Seattle spaces, require additional touch. So number of equity area plans approved, 32, and just completed documentation overall, 60. So we've gotten good feedback from both developers and community around this process, and we're excited to continue it.
So completed documentation, is that 60 different projects, 60 different buildings that you've been involved?
Sixty different plans, I believe, yeah.
So, it's wonderful that you're bringing this up today, because I just had a conversation earlier, and it continues, and I will tell you, going back 10 years during my first campaign, I cannot tell you how many people said, "Design Review is broken." I must have heard that, you know, 150 times. And I think big improvements were made. I also continue to hear from neighbors that, well, by the time early design guidance is passed, they're going to the design review process. They feel like, and again, I hear so many people say, well, you're not listening to us. And I think that translates into, well, you're not doing what we want. And so I'm hopeful that in this project, that we can get to people early, because I know and I've heard that if people in the neighborhood can actually reach out to the developer, the architect, prior to the time that they've spent, you know, many millions in creating their plans, they're going to be much more interested about what is it that the neighborhood actually wants? Is it the wider alley, or the access to the garbage cans, or, you know, places where people can pull out, or the step-ins, you know, so just getting more light and air? So I appreciate the fact that you're doing this, and I'd love just to have you keep us informed how it's going.
Yeah, we will. And just a reminder that, you know, the program came online in June, and so we got going very quickly, and we're continuing to.
We're only seven months in, and you've already done this. That's great.
If I can add to that, I think that there are also traditional groups who have engaged with the design review and design review board process to begin with, which was a large motivator for wanting to move towards a more inclusive community engagement outreach model that I think we have successfully begun to move in that direction of, you know, Community Involvement Commission that is much more reflective and inclusive of the people who live in our city. And so I appreciate the ongoing iterative effort to make sure that those underrepresented groups, who are being most disproportionately impacted by our rapid growth, that those are the folks who are going to be, continue to be centered in the conversation, as opposed to folks in our city who have always known what the design review board does and when they do it, and don't like the outcome, and so attack the system and the process because there is very little that we can do other than maintain the status quo that will be satisfactory to them. And I think it's really important for us to make sure that we're continuing to reach into neighborhoods very deeply to make sure that we're not continuing to go to the same well every single time, because every single time we do that, we'll get the same quality of water from that same well.
Very well put, yeah.
Every single time. And so I think, you know, as we continue to grapple with the issues around growth and displacement and gentrification and, you know, deliberating or mandatory housing affordability legislation in Councilmember Johnson's committee, I think for me, it's going to be really important to make sure that we continue to have readily available information as policymakers about how inclusive the outreach has been in those different areas to make sure that we can push back a little bit on this. We just don't want Seattle to change narrative.
Thank you.
That's well stated.
So just quickly, the Your Voice, Your Choice program took another step forward in my view, really going away from kind of quantity measure to more quality interactions, to your point, councilmember, around elevating voices of those most impacted through our participatory budgeting program. It's, in 2018, had expanded to $3 million for Parks and Street Projects. $2 million provided a maximum of 285 allocations for each council district, and then the remaining $1 million, which was added in 2018 only, designated for funding in the city's equity and environmental and initiative-focused areas as well, so additional funding into those spaces. We had over 1,000 ideas submitted that are community-generated. Project development team volunteers of over 500 people, and 51 projects were selected, including 21 in equity areas. This was also a new model, none necessarily new to the city, but kind of at this scale, I think the first time we've done it this way, around paid participation for community members to participate in the selection process. And essentially, really turning over the power of the selection process to community, which is new for the city. And so it has been so successful that other granting initiatives and programs have looked to take lessons from Your Voice, Your Choice to implement into their own programs. And we're continuing to move forward with this. This is where I was talking about better interaction with Neighborhood Street Fund. We are going to be funding a, in a partnership with SDOT, a person that sits with the Department of Neighborhoods to better track and align both the outreach and engagement strategies, but also Your Voice, Your Choice, and funding strategies as it relates to Neighborhood Street Fund, so.
When you said that this was unusual because you had community members that were making the decisions, I think that we had community members making recommendations in the past, but there was a sense of stagnant.
Right. Thank you, yeah. That's a good clarification.
And so now, what I'm really impressed with, with Your Voice, Your Choice, is that there are people that have never participated before that are saying, this is my neighborhood, and I really want to be involved. And then, of course, they go and they make their neighbors vote for it, and I'm finding that to be frankly a lot of fun, that in District 7, I was seeing a lot of competition among the neighbors and getting people to get out to vote.
Yeah. Just quickly, other accomplishments, People Academies for Community Engagement, we had over 50 graduates. We hosted what's called pop-up workshops, which is taking the workshop into community to kind of organize around particularly a community that maybe hasn't had that access or understanding or capacity of participating in the project, and what is, how do we build those skills and start that conversation? So as it relates to Sound Transit 3, we did a pop-up workshop in Del Ridge, for example, where maybe a lot of conversation had happened in West Seattle, but maybe in Del Ridge there needed to be some additional conversations to take place of, how do you participate in a process that is designating a route through your community, essentially? So that's been very successful. You know, the program's dedicated to teaching hands-on engagement empowerment skills. And it came out, funny enough, it came out of the community engagement former district coordinators that proposed it after hearing from community that they needed more tools at their disposal of how to engage with electeds, how to engage with the process. And so it's been a really successful program.
But people that are in the pop-ups are not part of the PACE program, or they are?
No, they're not.
So it's separate?
Separate, yeah. And then just finally, the Community Liaison Program, you know, one of the spaces where we continue to grow as a department is really in this partnership with community liaisons. We're at over 80 liaisons, working across 15 different departments on 48 different projects, really not just in translation and interpretation, which I think is maybe where it started, but not, I'm hoping, not where it ends. This is really, for us, our skill development, leadership development angle here. We're building more investment back into community, and, you know, we contract as independent contractors with these folks, but really treating them as community experts and really paying them for their time and building more kind of long-lasting skills back into the community.
And you are, you just, I think you just said this, but, so I just heard correctly, you are paying them to be doing this, and do people volunteer, or do they apply to be paid?
They go through an application process, and it's essentially, as we have contracted with different departments, they say, we would like to utilize this tool, we take a look at the roster. If there's a capacity need, we go out for additional contractors, or if not, we can go from the basic roster. Just quickly, historic preservation, we talked about the historic districts. We had 468 reviews of changes to designated sign landmarks last year and nine applications for special tax evaluation, a big piece of work here. As you know, councilmember was the work as part of the key arena this year, which we've been really tracking, the Seattle arena, as I should say, and that whole process, and we're going to continue to engage on that.
Great.
So one of the things I'm really excited about for 2019 is diving into strategic planning. And I just want to turn it back over to Sarah real quick to just talk about some of the contours of what we're doing here with, just, I'll introduce it briefly. This has been staff-driven from the beginning, and that was really important in order to have buy-in and ownership of the final result. So I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you. This has been really fun, and it's been a way for the staff to drive sort of our mission and vision and who we are in this work and have a voice the entire way. It started in July, and it's involved multiple convenings of different groups of people, some voluntold, some sort of, as you will. And it has just allowed us to bring to the surface the things that the 60 of us on the fourth floor are feeling the strongest about. There's essentially going to be three final products in the end, a strategic plan with a three-year timeframe with two overarching goals that will then cascade down through the department, guiding principles as an internal frame for how we work together to get to the what, and then the operational goals. And it's just been a wonderful way to have the entire floor speak to who we are and what we're about.
Nice. What changed in order to get 60 people to come together to do what you were saying, the strategic plan? How were you able to accomplish that?
We asked them to. We believed in them. I mean, I think it's just a matter of Andreas stepping in and leading the department and the rest of us leading right alongside him. He believes in shared governance and bringing, you know, elevating people who are the subject matter experts, and we have all of the sort of will and skill that we need to get this work done already there.
I will just say that it was important for us to come together internally. Obviously, there's a next step, whereas how do we take this out to community and really start engaging on the implementation and what does it actually look like for an implementation around it? And that's the next exciting step, once we have some good ownership and partnership internally. And so I've been very thankful to the staff who have seen this as kind of a, to put their stamp on how we are doing work for our communities.
I will tell you that, in my experience in talking with a number of people who are in the department right now, is that I see a sense of fun returning and that reaching out to the community in a very inclusive way, people seem to be really enjoying their jobs, so I want to say thank you.
I hope you've seen that we're really busy. We have a lot of things going on that balance sort of the new pieces of the Department of Neighborhoods and then those things that are considered, you know, old-school. But we've been listening to the team and literally using their words and their thoughts and their hopes and fears verbatim as we've gone through this work, and it's been pretty transparent and authentic along the way.
I really appreciate that. Years ago, I heard a phrase, which was, "Power shared is power gained," and I believe that. And what I'm seeing with your department, coming around a sense of collegiality internally, then you take it out into the neighborhood and it's like alive.
So speaking of. So speaking of important work, exciting work, and being busy, in 2019, we are launching with all force and under the leadership of Councilmember Mosqueta, in partnership with the mayor here as well, the 2020 census body of work. DON will be hiring here by the end of the month, an outreach and engagement lead that will help advise on policy strategies, act as a liaison between the county, state, and some of the federal stakeholders, help support the task force itself. We have also asked all departments within the city to identify a census liaison, because this is, it's not just a counting exercise. It is really something that we believe involves every single department. And so the mayor, through the deputy mayors, has issued a statement and a request to departments. And we will be working with the Seattle Foundation in King County for essentially a pooled fund for community-based organizations to access, to activate, in partnership with us, their communities in the count. This is going to, we see this as a civic engagement, leadership development opportunity as well, so it'll be housed there under the leadership of Amy Nguyen. But this is certainly something that we hope to work very closely with this council on to 2019 and 2020.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
And then we talked about this already, but the Your Voice, Your Choice will continue. This will be idea phase or idea submissions from January 28th to February 22nd, project development, March to April, and voting starting in July.
So if someone or a neighborhood won a grant last year, can they apply for something else if it's a continuation? Or how are you?
That's a good question. It's part of the Your Voice, Your Choice. I think that they'd have to, I'll get more clarification on that, because I'm not sure and I won't give you the wrong information, but my sense is that they'd have to apply for a new phase of the project.
Oh, I think that's, I mean that as well. I'm thinking about one neighborhood that had gotten some money for a pedestrian crossing, and then they would like to continue in another block or two, have another.
It's what comes out of the ideation or idea collection phase.
What was the first word you said?
Ideation.
Ideation?
Yeah. Some people don't think it's a word. I do think it's a word.
Good. Well, you've just coined it.
Okay, good.
The making of ideas.
The making of ideas, there you go. People smarter than me have used it, so there you go. The community liaison work, we're just, as I mentioned, planning it to broaden their work and really move beyond translation and interpretation. This, for us, is our workforce development arm, for lack of a better way of saying it. And to accomplish that, we're considering new project design. So maybe before, we were looking at the roster and saying, okay, who's available? But maybe now, we say, okay, this person has an interest in environmental work, and let's just streamline on environmental work and help them build up their skill set in that area instead of moving them along, depending on where the project is. And then just quickly, around the race and social justice, similar to the strategic planning process, and we were here talking about some of our SGI goals and accomplishments before, last year, we've, in partnership with OCR, have taken a look at how do we expand the goals of the change team at Department of Neighborhoods, understanding that maybe previous iterations of the change team hadn't been successful for a whole number of reasons, and really going back to the staff and say, what are the core things that you want to talk about that are relevant to you, that are relevant to your work? And so we came up, in partnership with OCR, a race social framework that's based on building a healthy, whole, thriving living system. And when you think of, we essentially asked the staff, what do you think of when you're in a safe space where you can really have a free flow of ideas? And there was a lot of feedback around working with people who are diverse, who are resilient, who are full of energy, peace, and balance, and so on. And it really resulted in four areas, which I'm really excited about. One area is around personal growth, which is going to manifest through caucusing. We're also going to establish a learning community function, essentially what are creative ideas of how to continue to push the envelope on race and social justice, on racial equity work? How are we doing HR and recruitment and career development? How are we promoting opportunities for those inside of our department? And then what are our ways or how we're networking, elevating cultures, peer support, and special events? So working with staff to plug them in, and I think you used voluntold, into at least one of these spaces, but really receiving a lot of good feedback from staff, because they're able to really, I think, guide themselves as to where they want to participate, which is important.
I really appreciate this. And if you just look at the words, and staff coming together, I assume, and saying, this is the environment we want to be working in. If you're full of energy, peace, compassion, and balance, and where there's movement and growth, and people feel loved, trusted, grateful, protected, and safe, can't do a lot better than that.
Yeah, we've had really good staff leadership under Jennifer Chow on this. Some of you know her through her work in the CID and others. And even though executive team will participate in each of them, we've been very clear that staff will have lead. So it's a little bit about sharing or giving up that power in the room, which is really important.
Power shared is power gained.
And then just quickly, as we close this up, we were working on a lot of racial equity toolkits, a lot of them programmatic, some of them within the strategic initiatives team, as I mentioned. Some of the ones looking into 2019 is continued work in the Chinatown International District as it relates to both community planning, but as it also relates to sound transit work at the Sound Transit Station, which has really been an exciting process in partnership with OPCD as well on both of those. We are also going to be looking at a racial equity toolkit for our historic preservation program, which has been, I think, an exciting piece of work, looking forward for me, as we look at a program-wide analysis to study racial equity outcomes as it relates to historic preservation of buildings. And so in some cases, historic and cultural preservation. So more to come on that, but that's our work plan for 2019. And we invite you to continue to work with us, and we work with you as you highlight some of your priorities in your different districts and citywide, and happy to support you.
Thank you very much. Just on the historic preservation, I want to come back to a couple of things. One is Eric Pettigrew's work that he and I have been working on with unreinforced masonry funding. And there, as I understand, again, in the legislature this year, some opportunity to do something a little bit different, which it's really a conglomeration of funding. But the idea is that for either very low-income loans or sometimes even grants, that some of these buildings, and I love this one, that's corner building that you have there, that if we can get the buildings restored, so many of the buildings have studio apartments in them, and it's like the old days of your dormitory living. But this is if we can preserve, if we can make the district, and live in the district like Pioneer Square, and at the same time, just be making more housing available for people. So I love it that you're doing that.
Appreciate the time.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nope.
Good. Well, great job. Thank you very much, and very nice to meet you. I'm glad you're here. Sarah, thanks for the good work. Andreas, excellent. And thank you again last night for the really good commission meeting. Okay, anything else? Anything else for good to the order? Anything else? Thank you. Okay, well, the meeting's adjourned.